Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make publicly comment on an application, we have comments slipped at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it into the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward to speak, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order, and first hear from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for additional speakers. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 before, I'm sorry, after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBAA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to district court. All ZBAA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBAA is in session. The zoning board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Okay, is there one that had a chance to look over the minutes of the last meeting?
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss, let us vote. And motion carries. The first case on our agenda, case number 19-307-BAC, Tim Redden Architecture. As I understand, this has been deferred and continued from the meeting and has been since withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That brings us to the next case, case number 19-313-BAC, Kevin Bryant Architecture. You want to step forward and state your case, please?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Dawn Townsend. I am a resident of Cattle Parish. Do you need my address?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. 129 Napoleon Drive in Shreveport, zip code 71115.
My name is Amy Watts. I'm a resident of Shreveport, 571 Demery Boulevard, 71115.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we can only have one person at a time at that podium.
Oh, okay. We are here in support of this sign being placed at Eden Gardens School, Elementary School. We are members of the PTA there, and we have worked for the last several years to raise money for this betterment of our school, and we're very excited about it, and we think it's going to be great for our school, great for the families that go to Eden Gardens. And like I said, we have worked really hard to raise the money to put this sign up, and we would really appreciate the passing of this plan. And we also have some other members of our PTA and then the person that is providing the sign for us. Do I, do y'all have questions? Do I need to just keep talking? I'm not sure today.
Yeah, you just state your case right now to us.
Okay. We believe that this sign would be a benefit for our school because it would light up during the day and so that the traffic and the people coming to carpool could see the sign and see what was going on at our school. It would be a great way to notify the families that go there. We have a very large carpool line that moves at the beginning of school and after school. And we did not want to put it on the ground because we thought that it might be visible. We have a lot of shrub and landscaping in that area that you would not be able to see it if you were in a vehicle. We have also a plan to dim the lights at night so as to not disturb any of the neighbors across the street. We do have residents across the street, and we can set a timer on that so that it's not shining for them and then turn it on in the morning. We also have an elderly custodian that climbs the ladder every day and changes the announcements on the sign, and we would like to relieve him of that. We don't want to have him get hurt or anything, so that's about it, I think. Amy, do you want to say anything else? This is my partner.
Okay. Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-313-BAC?
Amy Watts, resident of Shreveport, 571 Demery Boulevard, 71115. The current, one thing that I would add to that, what Dawn said, is the current sign is lit all the time. It is, there is not a way to dim it at night. This would be able to be turned off at night, in contrast with what we have now. Our current custodian who changes the sign, he actually is off for two weeks because he sprained his knee, and so he cannot be there right now. And it just, this will be, this can be done from the office. This is a computer program that one of our secretaries in the office would type in whatever announcements need to run on the board, and it can be changed very easily, instead of having somebody go out there in the heat or in the cold trying to inform our parents and the neighborhood of what is going on with the school. Over the last couple of years, we've raised $36,000 to put this sign up. It will improve the look of the school. It will improve the look of the neighborhood. There are other schools in that neighborhood that have a sign similar to this. Cattle Middle Magnet is right around the corner from Eden Gardens, and they also have a digital marquee sign out front for this same purpose.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-313-BAC?
Good afternoon. My name is Steve White. I'm the director of construction for Cattle Parish School Board. My address is 1961 Midway Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71108. One of the things that we were trying to gain the support of a digital marquee for the school is that schools are currently using these as information centers for the parents. I'm sure everyone up here with children can appreciate that particularly elementary school kids are probably not the best source of information to get, or best ports of transportation, get information back to mom and dad. So it's one of the things we're using as parents sit in carpool lines, they can see what's going on at the school, some notifications. We did sit down with Mr. Clark and go through some criteria on LED signs, particularly up in neighborhoods, so they're not disturbing to the neighbors in the area. The sign would be programmable, where it can be turned black at certain times, let's say by five o'clock in the afternoon, our parents are no longer in the carpool line, the sign could be turned black and then not be lit back up until the next morning until they're there for drop-off. So it's trying to be cooperative with what's going on, have the least impact on the neighborhood that we can. And then the other aspect, as was previously mentioned, the shrubbery and the way the street Eden Boulevard undulates getting to the school, unless this sign is placed on a pole, and I think we had discussed six to eight feet off the ground, people would not be able to see the sign until they're right on top of it. So very limited time space for them to sit there and read what messages is being scrolled on the LED screen. So it's something we would like to try. We would certainly want to cooperate with everyone. We do not want to impose on the neighbors to create a very bright sign lighting up someone's house in the middle of the night. That is not our intention at all. And certainly be willing to work with the MPC on timeframes that would be acceptable, where it does meet the need of getting the information to the parents in the drop-off and pickup lines, but while not disturbing the neighbors in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-313-BAC? Here's the one speaking against, case number 19-313-BAC.
My name is J.C. Simpson. I'm a resident of Cattle Parish, Shreveport, Louisiana. My mailing address, 641 Eden Boulevard. I live right across the street from the school. As the young lady stated, that the janitor is elderly and he climbs the ladder to change the marquee. I have seen, since I've been there, the security coordinator goes out with the pole to change what's on the marquee. There are times that there are no notifications on the sign that's presently there to notify the residents that live on the street of current things that are going on at the school. I have to go out and block the ends of my driveway because I have people parking to block the end of my driveway. They park on the grass, but I put up fists to keep them from parking on my grass. If the sign is, if you guys vote to approve this sign, we just need cooperation from the school and letting the residents that live on the street exactly what's going on. Because you guys may not have been on that street when activities are going on at the school, but the parking is out of this world, on both sides of the street.
Excuse me, Mr. Simpson, I just want to clarify, are you against the sign? Or you just want to be?
I just, I just want to be heard.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Please continue.
Okay, because it's just horrendous. There are times that the people that live right in front of the school can't get out of their driveways because cars are parked on both sides of the street, okay, behind their driveways, and they have to try to maneuver to get in and out. Okay, there's currently a vacant lot across the street from me where the parents park. Don't have a problem with that. But even then, some park on the end of the curb that's right in front of my driveway, and I bag my vehicle in all the time because of the fact that I might have to leave early in the morning, and that's the best way for me to get out, okay? But we just need some consideration. The residents that live on the street need some consideration.
My suggestion, sir, is you make the acquaintance of these ladies right here at the PTA, and I'm sure they can put you in touch with the administration at the school and have you be heard directly by them.
Okay, because somebody has already gone over to the school or talked to them at the school, but, you know, nothing is being done.
Thank you for your comments.
Is there anyone speaking against case number 19-313-BAC? No, ma'am. Yeah, you can fill out when you come to the podium.
Sir, you can make your comments and then fill the slip out afterwards.
I am Elvin Pennewell, 606 Hendrix Place, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I live in Eden Garden and I've been there since '64. When the school were built, before, when the school, the both schools were built, they was neighborhood schools at that time. And since that time, the school turned into, the parish turned it into what it is now. We are members of Eden Garden neighborhood. We have more problems. We lose the control of our city, our community during this time of the year, from 1:30 probably, or 1:30 or 2:00, until 4:00 almost. The neighborhood, all they did and had more rooms to the school, and we got kids coming from many different sections of the parish there, and the cars lined up from, if you're familiar with that area, from the library all the way into the neighborhood, and then coming in two or three streets there, just like this. If we have an emergency during that period of time, the fire wagon or the ambulance couldn't get in there because of the jammed up and a lot of people's driveway get blocked in. We don't need any other things to block, help take some more of our freedom in our neighborhood added on there. I don't know what this deal is, the constituents is requesting. I know it, we don't need any other, any other thing concerning that school to draw money, make some money or whatever. We need some, taking away some of this conjecture and problem we have out there. And I would suggest and pray to y'all that y'all would turn this down because we pay taxes for freedom. We come in there for freedom, and we done lost all of that at same hours of the day. And I appreciate, we appreciate y'all's effort to turn this particular project down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else speaking against number, case number 19-313-BAC? Okay, I had a couple of comments I wanted to make.
Yeah, and then I might as well.
Okay. The first thing I would, you know, hope that could happen is that there'd be something between the school board and the, yeah, and the residents concerning the time that these signs are on and off, the dimming of the signs. I don't think there's anything in the books that say what time it should be on and off.
You need to allow the applicant time to rebut.
You're exactly right. Those that were, the applicant, do you want to have, do you have a rebuttal at all? Okay.
I would like to address the man that lives right across the street from the school, and I am so sorry for.
Ma'am, you can't do that.
I'm very sorry for the traffic that runs through there, and I know it's an issue on some days. That's one of the things that we're hoping that this digital sign will allow because the residents will be able to see the message, and there can be more than one message that goes across the sign at one time. And so we are, hope with this is that not only is it informing our parents of what's going on at the school, it is also informing residents of things that are going on at the school. We can work with our parents on not parking on the opposite side of the street. I know that is an issue. We can, you know, we are more than happy to work with the residents of the neighborhood, and this sign will be turned off at 5:00, you know, especially in the winter when it starts getting darker earlier. You know, I know that light can probably be a little bit overwhelming, so that can definitely be turned off at 5:00 because, like Mr. White said, there's students, there's no students there at that point. So we are hoping that this sign will assist both our parents and students and the neighborhood in keeping them informed of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think what the issue, we have two different issues going on here. You know, we're here today to speak about the sign being put up. Some of the issues that were brought up against the sign, that this is the wrong meeting for that, for that discussion. That discussion should be either taken place at the Cattle Parish School Board during their meeting or the city council, because those two entities handle, you know, the traffic problems and all that you're having, you know, at your house in front of the school. But we're just here today to talk about the actual sign being put up. Okay?
That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted those members of the public who are here with concerns to understand that we are not ignoring your concerns, but that that is not before us today, and it's not our purview to address those particular concerns. But I do encourage them to get with the school board, or as Mr. Hendrick said, the city council. I do know that Southfield School, for example, have come to an arrangement with their neighbors that during the morning and afternoon pickups and also for special events, they are responsible for placing orange cones out for about a two or three block radius in front of their school to prevent that problem with their neighbors, and that might be something that could be worked out with this school as well.
Anything else on the board? Okay, what do I hear?
Yes. I think we got somebody out there.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Not at this time, I'm sorry.
It's too late now, ma'am. Okay. Are there motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss, let us vote. And the motion carries. Next case, case number 19-313, 315-BAC, Thomas Zwydoff.
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Zwydoff. I live at 553 Dunmoreland Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. Trying to get a variance because I put up a fence, not realizing I needed a permit, and it's six foot, and according to some unseen circumstances, I guess I'm not supposed to have a six-foot fence on a certain side of my house. I didn't realize that. The reason why I put it up is because I have a very expensive hunting dog and another, my daughter's dog, they would basically jump the fence and not even touch the fence and run off. And I'm trying to prevent them from either getting hit by a car or destroying somebody else's property. And since I put it up, they have not gotten out through the fence or any other way. It's been up for several months now, dealing with all this and going back and forth between the zoning board and all that. I just wish to keep my fence up. That's strictly it.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Anyone else speaking in for case number 19-315-BAC? Is there anyone speaking against case number 19-315-BAC?
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen McMinniman. I'm here with my wife Jennifer McMinniman. We live at 463 Dunmoreland Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. We're the applicant's neighbor. The fence borders where we live, and I'm the one who filed the zoning complaint. The applicant states that he was completely unaware of what the zoning restrictions are when he put up this fence and only found out after the fact. This is not true. When the applicant started building the fence, because it was extending all the way up my front yard, almost to the street, I asked him what his plans were for the fence. He stated that he was going to build a six-foot solid fence to completely enclose his yard to include his reverse corner side yard. I let him know that this was not compliant with the zoning commission. My previous neighbor had built two fences, so I was familiar with the code. I let him know that while the zoning code did not permit for the solid fence to go all the way around his reverse corner side yard, it did allow him to tie into his existing backyard fence that was six-foot solid fence and tie it into the side of his house. On the application drawing that the applicant was required to do, it shows where this existing fence is. It is 97 feet wide. This solution would have provided him with a 97-foot wide, fully enclosed backyard that would have included his patio, his grill, and provided ample space for both his privacy and to secure his hunting dog. Additionally, because I knew the fence was in violation and I did not see a building permit posted, I asked him if he had a building permit. He said he did, and then when I asked to see it, he said he didn't have to show me anything. That's fine. I took pictures of the fence, I documented it for my complaint, and then I filed my complaint. As the applicant stated, his reason for the fence is to secure his dogs. That is fine. No one in the neighborhood, his dogs have gotten out numerous times, no one in the neighborhood is trying to prevent him from building a fence. We just want him to build a fence that is in compliance with the zoning code. As the board well knows, for them to approve a variance to a zoning code violation, they must make a finding that there is a hardship that prevents the applicant from fully conforming with the code and that the fence must keep with the essential character of the neighborhood. Regarding the hardship, the applicant himself, he cannot give a reason that the fence could not comply with the code. When he asked on the application to describe the physical surroundings that hinder him from complying with the code, he merely stated that there was not any surroundings that hindered the fence and that it was purely for containing his dogs and for his privacy. When the code permits him to build a fence that would completely enclose his backyard and be 97-foot wide, there's clearly not a hardship that requires an exception to the established and existing zoning code. The code allows him to have a fence that is more than sufficient to meet all of his needs. We would not be here today, and none of his neighbors would have any issue. And my big question to the board would be, why is a zoning compliant fence not sufficient in this case? In closing, I'd like to say we oppose the variance and we request you deny it and for the following reasons. First off, no hardship exists. The applicant is allowed to build a six-foot fence that fully encloses his backyard and would provide security and privacy for a family. It would completely meet the intentions of him seeking this variance. Additionally, there is no hardship, or excuse me, the section of zoning code that was violated is written specifically to prevent properties like 463 Dunmoreland that sit adjacent to reverse corner lots. Granted, variance here would prioritize the wants of one homeowner over the rules that are in place to exist the property of the other neighbors. Additionally, it undermines the character of the neighborhood and it lowers property value when new construction is not in compliance with the zoning code. If a variance is granted here, it essentially sends a message to the entire community that if you live adjacent to a reverse corner lot, you could have a six-foot noncompliant fence extend from your house all the way up essentially to where the sidewalk is, or wherever the legal setbacks are required, and that it would not be a problem. It also undermines the UDC itself. It rewards folks who, even when their neighbors tell them, hey, you're supposed to have a building code, this fence is not going to be compliant. It rewards folks who then intentionally disregard requirements for both building permits and people who intentionally disregard the fact that they have to adhere to the rules of the zoning code. It signals to the entire Shreveport community that these zoning regulations do not matter and that there's no consequence whatsoever for willfully violating it. My fear is that if you allow variances like this, the message we're sending in our community is it's okay to just build wherever you want, even if your neighbors tell you, hey, you're supposed to get a permit. Instead of taking five minutes to do that, they just build it and then come and ask for forgiveness after the fact. That's about all I have to say. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and we just request we... and, uh, we just request we, uh, request that you deny this, uh, application for a variance, thank you.
Chair, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McMenamin?
Yes.
Sorry, could you put up the, the, um, site plan that they provided on the overhead, please? So, could you just point out in here, your, your contention is that the ninety-seven foot fence on the left side of the screen?
Yes, so...
If it were extended a few feet and then turn and connect to the corner of the house?
Exactly, that was one of the suggestions I brought up to him when he was beginning to construct the fence. Um, as you can see, um, it's not drawn to scale. I would like to point out that this picture kind of gives the impression that this fence barely extends past the hot side of his house, and that's not true. As you can see, um, at the top, the extension past the existing backyard fence is forty-three feet. Um, there's another measurement where the, to the right of his house, the backyard, uh, or excuse me, the end of the driveway is also forty-three feet, which, in my opinion, is drawn roughly to scale and represents a true, uh, picture of what it would be. Um, I believe there were also two pictures of the fence in question that were included in the application that show that this fence extends a, a very long way, um, on, that borders both properties and also in, in front of his house. The previous homeowner had actually, because they wanted to completely enclose their backyard, they had, uh, gotten a building permit, they had exactly my proposed solution, uh, in place. They had built a fence where the backyard fence says ninety-seven feet, they took that corner and they tied it directly into the back, uh, back left corner of the home.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Is anyone else speaking against case number one nine dash three one five dash BAC? Okay, you have three minutes, sir.
Excuse me?
Three minutes.
My name is Jamil Damalaji, I live at four five nine Dunn Morland Circle, which is next to, two houses down from the, uh, property, that's requesting the variance. Uh, I'm here to, uh, speak against the variance, uh, for some, some of the same reasons that the neighbor Stephen has, uh, mentioned. The, uh, MPC has codes to protect our neighborhoods. Uh, I've found that in Spring Lake, we have a lot of problems that are not being addressed by the MPC, code violations. Uh, in this case, there was no permit requested. The individual was informed he was out of code, he proceeded anyway. What, if you all saw the submission by Steve, there was a lot more to this in regards to the behavior and, uh, threats by, uh, the gentleman's wife who's with the, uh, police department when he was trying to take pictures, like in trying to intimidate him. Spring Lake is struggling to try to maintain the character and the value, and this is not in the, uh, spirit of doing that, it's against the MPC codes. In my own backyard, I had to replace a fence because the neighbor who's an ex-city councilman did not have one around his pool. And as of today, he still doesn't have a complete fence around his pool. As we speak, children could be drowning in it. I've made several complaints to the MPC and the city, they've done nothing about it. Four or five houses down, there's a house with, uh, cars abandoned in the driveway and cars parked in the street. Number of homes in Spring Lake recently, uh, have been abandoned, but fortunately, because the neighborhood still maintains its character, some flippers have come in and they've started buying and rebuilding those homes. We want to see the neighborhood succeed, we don't want to see it go downhill, and I believe that, uh, the, uh, applicant can easily adjust the fence he has put up, protect his dogs, and everybody would be happy. Thank you.
Do you want to have any questions?
Is anyone else speaking against case number one nine dash three one five dash BAC?
My name is P. Michael Atkins, I live at four sixteen Dunn Morland Circle. Uh, I've lived there since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, I'm here really to protect the quality of the neighborhood. I share my concerns eloquently expressed by the two speakers, and I simply think, uh, approving, uh, code violation variances after the fact is just inappropriate.
All right, thanks, sir. Is anyone else speaking against case number one nine dash three one five dash BAC?
Good afternoon, Clarence Bavanagh, four thirty-three Dunn Morland Circle. I'm a resident of Spring Lake, around the corner from the, uh, applicant, uh, about six houses over, been there for twenty years. I'm also a licensed architect in the community. I would like to, we've got rules for a reason. Um, I've been for MPC and ZBA before for some of the commercial projects I designed, so I understand, uh, why the rules exist, I'd like to see them enforced. I'd also like to offer, as a neighbor, I think there's some solutions that would take what has been built and perhaps modify it and maybe satisfy everyone. So, as a neighbor, I'll be happy to help the applicant with any modifications, contribute some ideas, perhaps even get some of my neighbors to give them a hand one Sunday afternoon to fix the fence. So, that's my comments, thank you very much.
Yeah, there you go. Got two.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else speaking against case number one nine dash three one five dash BAC? Hey, sir, would you like to have a rebuttal, Mr. Zwydoff?
Yes. Uh, the fence was already up, I don't know what he's talking about, moving a fence, I didn't move any fence, I just literally put bigger slats up to the fence that was already there. I have pictures, if you'd like to see, of the fence, how far, it's sixteen feet off the sidewalk, which is in return, uh, pretty, pretty far, you know, it's blocking nobody. Uh, the, from what I get, the, the, it's supposedly there to, so you don't block any streets or anybody. I'm not blocking anybody, I, I literally am not hurting anybody. I, I, I put my fence up, I get it, I, 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 I should have got a permit, I get that, I, I understand it, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty, you know, but I, I, I have to, I, I got a lot of money in my dog, I put money in the fence to keep my dog because nobody else is going to pay for my dog if he gets out and he gets hit or if somebody steals him or, or whatever because he's out running around. I, I have to come up with that. My son has became really attached to this dog, it's supposed to be my dog, and he sleeps with him every night, and one night he got out, and he was gone for several hours, we couldn't find him, and my son cried for like two and a half hours before he went to sleep. I mean, it's, it's, it's really, my fence is not, there's more pictures than just this one. As you can see, this is from the, the neighbor's driveway that way. Uh, I have, I have other pictures too as well. It's, it's literally far enough off the road that it doesn't block anybody or anything. Um, I'm, I'm, that, that's really all I got.
Okay, I have a question. I have a question.
Yes.
Sir, just a second, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, I have actually several. So, you just added pickets to the existing fence?
Yes, sir.
You didn't add poles or another top rail?
Nope, well, well, I had to put another top rail up there to, 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 because the other rails were, uh, bad.
Right, so that, that's new construction and this doesn't meet the code. So, it doesn't matter where the fence was, the fence you had was in compliance because of its height.
I, I, I get that, but I'm, I'm ju- I'm just saying that I, I literally, I didn't, I didn't move any, any, any distance any which way.
Okay.
I literally, the, the bottom rail is the same rail, I just put pickets and I had to put new one because the top rail was rotten.
I just want you to understand that's kind of irrelevant to this issue.
Okay.
Right. Secondly, do you refute the, uh, uh, assertion that your neighbor informed you that you needed a permit?
Uh, he, he came out there and he said some choice words, and I, I was just kind of just trying to get my fence up so I have my dogs out there, man, to be honest, I, I...
Okay.
We've had run-ins before for, for other stuff, and I just try to stay away from him.
Fair enough. Uh, all right, thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any comments or questions? I'd like to make a comment, um... No, sir, there's only one rebuttal from... This meeting doesn't allow for rebuttal, sir. Okay. As a citizen of Shreveport, I'd like to see neighbors get along. And I know things happen, you know, a lot of times and it causes, you know, division between people. But I also hear one of the persons that were against, uh, this variance say that they're willing to help out in the situation, that they are an architect. Um, I think that's, uh, that speaks volumes, you know, because I like to see neighbors get along. I'm pretty sure where you guys live at, um, property value is also predicated upon people getting along with each other, you know, and not having disputes going on. So, I would really like to see, you know, if you guys really want to do that, you guys talk it out and bring this fence into code, because that's basically what we're talking about here is being in, in compliance with the code. All right, anybody else? Okay, are there a motion?
Motion to, uh, move to deny, second.
That's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss, let's vote.
Just for a second, I'd like to just go on the record and say that my reasons for denial are pretty much exactly what Mr. McMenamin said is, um, I, I don't feel like the approval standards that we are supposed to follow have been met. That's all.
So, this is a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
And the motion to deny carries. All right. That brings us to the end of our public hearing. Is there any old business that we need to discuss today?
I have something under the director's report, that's it.
Okay, all right, any new business? Okay, is there a director's report?
Yes, um, Mr. Clark is on vacation, he will be back, back in the office on Tuesday. I do want to, uh, recognize a staff member that will be, be here for, for the last time at the ZBA meeting. Monis Sweeney is, uh, going to be leaving our office as of September ninth. A lot of you have enjoyed her good work here, got to know her as a very competent, professional individual. We're very, very sad to see her go. She, she would like to have been able to stay, but she wasn't able to get her visa extended, and, uh, otherwise, we would still be having her on staff for many years to come, and we wish her all the well as she, as she moves on, she'll be returning to India for at least a period of time, and then, uh, hopefully we'll come back one day. So, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that we really appreciate all of her hard work, and, uh, she'll, she'll be for one more meeting, she'll be here for an MPC meeting, but this is the last opportunity that she'll have to work with her.
Thank you for all your help and work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great job.
Well done.
We'll get the light on for you and come back. All right, we hope so, anyway. All right, um, public comments. Okay, I have no comments at this time, anybody on the board want to have anything? All right, meeting adjourned.